Good morning and welcome. It is April 10th. We always start with pledge and prayers. If you're in person, if you could rise, I'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Davis, will you open your prayer?
Sure. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you, God, for liberty. We thank you for freedom. We thank you for our nation. Pray that you would be with us today as we make important decisions, as we honor our citizens, and as we give you thanks for all your blessings. Pray, God, that you would continue to bless these United States of America, this county of Sodom, and just give us wisdom today. We ask, and we ask it all in the name of Jesus. And everybody say?
Amen.
Thank you. All right. We will jump right in with approving the meeting minutes of April 3rd.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 3rd. It's submitted.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
And the matter of request for appropriation of funds.
Any comments or questions on items two? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
And the matter of request for appropriation transfer of funds.
Any comments or questions on the transfers? Hearing none?
Motion approved.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular schedule of accounts for the various funds, moral obligations, and the then and now certificates. The total of eight hundred and sixty-three thousand nine thirty, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-three cents.
Any comments or questions on item four? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
And the matter of accepting miscellaneous report.
Any comments or questions on our miscellaneous reports? Hearing none?
Motion accept.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution for honoring fallen work zone workers and recognizing National Work Zone Awareness Week.
All right. I have a resolution to present for the board for consideration. In the matter of the resolution for honoring fallen work zone workers and recognizing National Work Zone Awareness Week. Whereas it is with great reverence that we proudly honor all fallen work zone workers and recognize the safety of those who are currently working on our roads during National Work Zone Awareness Week. And whereas each year National Work Zone Awareness Week aims to promote the safety of women and men who build, work to build our infrastructure and make our roads safer for our daily commutes. And whereas construction laborers are often the most vulnerable in the event of a work zone intrusion, and they work tirelessly in the elements, often extreme, to improve our infrastructure for the public overall. And whereas since 2020, there have been over twenty-two thousand work zone crashes on Ohio roadways in which workers were present in nearly forty of those intrusions. And now for there be resolved that the Sodom County Board of Commissioners, Sodom County, Ohio, does proclaim April 21st through the 25th, 2025, as National Work Zone Awareness Week, and we urge all citizens to pay attention, slow down, and thank all road workers in Sodom County for their service. We have members of the local laborers union with us today. And, you know, as we're getting into the season, it's, uh, one thing that springs up in Ohio during spring is not flowers, it's orange barrels. So we're, it's orange barrel season coming up, and even with the most recent rain events, we'll see even more roads repaired. I know we had a lot of slips in the community and having those conversations with Engineer LeBron, but there, there are men and women that will be actively out on the roads fixing our infrastructure. And it's critical that we slow down, get over when we can, if, and just be mindful of those work zones to protect not just the workers, but their friends, our family, our neighbors. So we have this presented. If there's additional comments, we'll entertain those at this time, and then we will vote on the resolution.
I would just implore everyone that's out there driving and to be, to watch out for our workers. And in my history with Moon Coleman Construction, we had two employees hit. They were, um, s- s- um, flagmen, and someone came through the barrier and hit both of them at the same time. They, they survived, but it was, it was a very serious, very frightening for us and their families. So it can happen, and, and this was an accident, but please, just watch out for, for those out there.
Agreed with both, and we do need to be cautious, very cautious. Slow down. You know, everybody's in a hurry nowadays, and in a work zone, using overabundance of caution, even if it means going below the stated speed limit in the area, just slow down. It's not worth a life, it's not worth an injury, to save a couple of, really, literally seconds to where you're going. So it's not worth it. So please, do so, and I know most do. Some people are overzealous and don't, and we have had people lose their lives and be severely injured and be literally disabled the rest of their life as a result. So, yeah, we strongly urge people to slow down, save lives. Thank you.
Thank you both for those comments. If we would, we will take, entertain a motion.
I'll make the, um, motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll, I'll second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. And gentlemen, if we could come up and get a picture with you all. We appreciate your hard work and the, and your members, of course, for keeping our, and repairing our roadways.
Yes, sir.
Now, as all your members do, they'll have to be out there.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone who'd like to? Is this guy right here? One, two, three.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right.
In the matter of designating Fair Housing Day in Sodom County, Ohio, April 11th, 2025.
All right, we have another resolution to consider. We have members of the Realtors Board Association, the lenders, so I'll read this resolution and we, for consideration. In the matter of designating Fair Housing Day in Sodom County, Ohio, April 10th. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11th, 1968, enshrined in a federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, family status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmative, rather than affirmatively fair housing in their communities. And whereas Sodom County Commissioners are committed to the mission and extent of the Congress to provide fair and equitable housing opportunities for all, whereas our so- social fabric and econ- excuse me, economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities. And whereas more than fifty years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists, and many community, communities remain segregated. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunities are opposed to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sodom County Board of Commissioners do declare April 10th this year and all following years Fair Housing Day in Sodom County, Ohio, establishing our great county as an exclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of Sodom County. You know, it is, one of the great honors in life is being able to get to the point where you can fairly own a house. It is the, the, how you maintain wealth generationally, it is how wealth is passed on, and, and is our, really what we should be advocating is that, that opportunity exists to all citizens in our county. So we appreciate the, uh, the board, the Realtors Board, for bringing this resolution to our attention. I appreciate all the hard work you guys do. I know we have, um, a lot of houses changing hands, it's getting ready to step up again, right, because of the, the season. And hopefully we see the housing market continue to rise and people continue to invest in building new housing. I know there's multiple projects in the county to, to add senior housing, which will then open up these larger houses. I, we had the conversation that, you know, some of our elderly are overhoused, but they don't have a place to go. So even on that end of the spectrum, finding adequate housing for our elderly, which opens up for families, and so on and so forth. So, um, thank you for the hard work you guys do in promoting our area and promoting the real estate stock that is out there. That's what I have. If there's any additional comments?
I'll just add that I truly appreciate your dedication to your mission, and thank you so, so much.
Thank you for all your hard work. I, I will add this, since we are on Facebook and people do watch this. Sodom County's a great investment, and if people are looking to develop and build, this is a great place to go. Your investment will not sit empty long. People need housing, so we need all types of housing. Entry level, low, medium, upper income, we, we need everything. And there are people waiting on the long list right now to get housing, and it is, it is very sad that that is the situation here in Sodom County, but it is not just Sodom County. It is everywhere. I hear reports on this literally every month. Housing is a huge subject at the state level and federal level, and I will tell you, the county commissioners across the state are having this issue everywhere. It, it doesn't matter what the market is. And, but we need everything all across the board, and I guarantee you, if you come here and you invest in this community, your investment will reap rewards and return on that investment, guarantee it. And we're seeing a lot of that right now, and there are people investing, entrepreneurs showing up, doing what it takes to build those houses. Thank you so much for moving them and getting them sold, and, and, and we just hope and, and pray that we continue to see that growth in the coming years. So we need it. A lot of our houses unfortunately have just fallen on hard times. We have a lot of older houses that are just, they're wore out. They're just wore out. Unfortunately, we would love to remodel every single home, but it isn't feasible, especially with construction costs these days, material costs. It isn't always feasible. It's really great, a labor love. Somebody wants to take the house, remodel it, it's a labor love, and they want to pour that money into it. But a lot of times, and we even see this with our chip program, the cost to remodel, repair is just exorbitant now. And, um, unfortunately, sometimes it's better to start over and build, and that's okay. But that's a decision that has to be made by, of course, the builder, the investor. But we do our best to try to remodel, but everybody needs to understand that that's not always feasible. It's not. And many of these homes in Sodom County are a hundred years. There's a lot of hundred-year plus houses, and some of them are not historically important. They're not. And when it comes to that, don't get upset if you see an older house torn down. I know some people do. I do too, if I know it's historical or if it had some really wonderful architecture. I hate that. I really do. But we need to use common sense, and we have to make sure that we have housing for future generations too, and that's really important. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you both for your comments. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
Would we like to do a picture? Two resolutions, and it's a double resolution day. It's good. Two, yeah. Molly.
Thank you all.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
It's always good seeing you.
Thank you all.
Molly, you want to? All right.
In the matter of authorizing the commissioners to enter into a contract with Ohio Regional Development Corporation for Administration Services for fiscal year 2025, Community Housing Impact and Preservation Chip Program, and authorizing O D R C to submit the fiscal year 2025 Community Housing Impact Preservation Chip Program application with the State of Ohio on behalf of Sodom County.
And so this is, um, the agreement to have Ohio Regional Development Corporation handle our chip program. They've handled it now for, how many years? A while. Is that the official date? A while? But they, they've, they've, at least eleven years they've handled our chip program.
At least eleven.
So we're, we're glad to see that they were interested yet again to continue their, their efforts here in the county. I, I did have one citizen say, hey, you know, we talk about chip quite a bit, and it's important in the amount of funds there, but also make sure, like, it's limited funds, and we operate on first come, first served. So, um, you know, when that opens up, it looks like in '25, beginning, we'll start sending out correspondence and advertisements of when that list opens back up, but to monitor and manage the chip program. But this is for the, the contract and the agreement between us and the development corporation to, for them to be the administrator of it. Any comments or questions?
I, I would, I would just ask one question, and this is to our clerk, who usually handles a lot of this, and, and our deputy, of course. Are you satisfied with the work that they're doing, and would you recommend this?
Yeah.
All right. And in addition to that, I know, I've, I've been in office for a while now. We've seen, I, I just did some quick math, right around eight million that we've been awarded in grant funds to repair homes in that time. And I often think if we hadn't repaired a lot of these, and they're owner occupied homes, if we had not done that, how many homes would have fallen into disrepair and finally gone off the housing stocks? So we've been very successful in getting the grant over the years. I remember, old enough to remember a time when Portsmouth used to do their own, and we used to do our own, and then, um, we got married, and we started doing it together, and, which was a wise move. And it's assured us more scoring to get that and, and to be awarded the, the grant. So it's been very, very successful for a lot of people in our community that otherwise would have eventually probably, their home would have just fallen apart underneath them. People that are on fixed incomes, that could not afford to fix basic things like windows, and I say basic nowadays, it's, they're expensive, windows, roofs, a- any energy efficient things. And then the other thing that we do often is we collaborate with C A O on this, and we're, something where we can't do it, um, they pick up pieces on the other side and things that they can do with their grants on other, other things. So it's worked well. I'm glad to see that we're doing this again, and let's, let's get it done. It's, it's, it's always a really, really tough time, at application time, because of the lines of people needing assistance, and there's never enough money. Never. And it is rather competitive. Parts of it are very competitive. And anyways, it's, it's tough. It's really tough. We have a third party that administers it, so we are not in any way, shape, or form part of the decision-making there, which is wise. But it is a, a very, a great program that has benefited our community.
I would just make one comment so that everybody listening understands that if they come for application day and they see a huge line, don't leave and think that you're not going to get funding, because all those applications have to go through whether they qualify for income and whether they meet all the guidelines. Doesn't mean that they're not going to get help, because they, they all have to process through, and it could very well work down to them.
So I'll reiterate that, just in case the microphone didn't pick our clerk up. She was encouraging folks, if you do show up, when, when the application line opens and you see a long line, please stay in line, please get an application. Just because somebody gets an application doesn't mean, one, they're going to turn it back in, or two, they're going to qualify. So by all means, still go through the process, and it could work its way down to you, even though you're, maybe you're further back in the line.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. If there's no additional comments, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of the memorandum of understanding between Sodom County Board of Commissioners and Sodom County Engineer and Brush Creek Township Board of Trustees for work performed by county employees and county equipment.
Um, this is agreement. We've done multiple of these already this year. This is the agreement between the engineer, the commissioners, and Brush Creek Township for joint use of county employees and county equipment. Any comments or questions? Hearing none?
Brush Creek.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of contract agreement for administrative services for fiscal year 2025 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program between Sodom County and Ohio Regional Development Corporation.
So this is the actual contract with the Ohio Regional Development Corporation to administer our chip program. Any comments or questions? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of contract agreements between Porter Township Board of Trustees and Sodom County Sheriff regarding expanded police protection.
Uh, this expanded police protection contract agreement between the sheriff and Porter Township trustee for four deputies, five days a week, eight hour shifts, for a total of a hundred and sixty hours a week. It's a yearly total of, um, well, uh, one and two monthly total was twelve thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-three cents, yearly total of one hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-three cents. Position three has a monthly total of twelve thousand three dollars and ninety-four cents. Their yearly is, uh, one thousand, one hundred and forty-four thousand forty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. And then position four is a monthly total of eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars sixty-four cents, yearly total of one forty-one and nine seven nine seventy. Any comments or questions? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of the, of non-binding letter of intent between Sky Solar Energy, L T D, and Sodom County Board of Commissioners regarding greater Portsmouth Regional Airport.
Okay, so we've been approached by Sky Solar Energy. It's a, an organization that is looking to potentially, um, do work out at our airport. They've spoken to us twice now. They've met with the airport board, or at least the chair of the airport board. Their goal is to potentially build some hangars in the fence. There's, it's kind of a, they're going after hangars, some solar on the hangars, potentially a data center within the fence, all housed in that same facility. Phase three could even be building, uh, within the fence, a, uh, facility for training for mechanics and pilots. Right now, what they are asking for is if we're even interested to provide them with a letter of intent. It is non-binding by this board, but rather saying, yeah, we're interested, and then please run and run fast, and then come back to us with the actual plan and the financials, and what does it look like. I know they have agreements in place with Delaware County Airport. They, they're already doing some work there. They're interested in really these smaller rural airports is kind of their focus. I know they've met with John Carey at the Governor's Appalachian Office regarding this project as well. Once again, this does not hold us to account to anything they're trying to do, but rather saying, yeah, we're, we're interested, and then please come back to us. What they're trying to do is go after grant funding essentially to, to see the viability of the project. Comments or questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I have voiced my opinion, and I, of course, I've shared it with you two about the, um, what they're trying to do, and I'm, I'm o- okay with, uh, solar on hangars. I get a little nervous when I hear about solar on greenfields, and my concern is, is that we will be giving up land that could potentially be aircraft maintenance or, or aviation-related industries, building parts for airplanes, interiors, things like that. I get a little nervous when, when I hear that. Now, I know it's all things that would have to be negotiated down the road, and this is, like you said, totally a, a non-binding letter of intent. The one thing that really intrigued me is when we first originally talked, we talked about air mobility. And air mobility is something that's coming. It, it will come. And, um, for those that are not familiar with air mobility, um, it's basically flying cars. I mean, I mean, it's gonna, we're gonna get to a place with our society that, um, roads are so congested, and, and they're, they're building these things now in the Dayton area. I mean, the, the, it's coming. I don't understand or even try to even fathom what that is going to look like, but they're looking at the regional airports to be those hubs, because it really doesn't work in a, in a commercial or a larger, say like Port Columbus, Cincinnati, Northern Kentucky. It, it just doesn't work, where you can literally fly from Cincinnati to Portsmouth in a little tiny plane, and it also rolls. So it, 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 these things are coming, and, and we're hearing about this all in a lot of meetings. So it's kind of setting the stage for that, but at the same time making it economically feasible. So, you know, we're hearing all about data centers, how there's going to be this huge requirement for power and, you know, electric, and, and, and all these, and data centers require a lot of electricity, and, and so it's all part and parcel that this company is, um, very knowledgeable. They are very knowledgeable. Matter of fact, Randy comes out of the aerospace industry and, and, Mr. King, right?
Brian.
Brian, I'm sorry. Should have remembered that. Anyways, but he comes out of the aerospace industry. He was a fighter pilot himself, I believe. So, um, he's trying to bring this to Ohio in a much larger way. So in that, I totally support. We just want to be careful with the parcels that we have out there, the, the land we have, because I think in, at the end of the day, I want to see manufacturing jobs. I want to see living wage jobs. Data centers may employ a few, solar fields employ hardly any, and, but I also see the need, um, for those in some aspects, but also funding for the airport. You know, they lease those fields now for farming, and they get money from that. So we have to make sure that whatever funding there is, that it shifts and it isn't lost for airport operations. I think it'll be okay, but I just, there's a lot of moving parts to that, and I think it's something that we really want to keep an eye on, pull, you know, and I, and I know we.
No, we expressed your concern. I know you wasn't with us, last time was with Brian, but we said, look, if it's, if it's on the ground, it's probably not.
Okay.
It's, it's probably a no-go, um, just because of the goal of truly building out infrastructure and, and jobs out on that site. So we'll see what he comes back with, should we pass this letter of, of interest. Because we're like, yeah, if you want to put them on top of the building, that's one thing. If you want to eat up real estate, that's a drastically different conversation.
Build hangars. We need them.
And that's teehangers, teehangers, education, uh, data centers. It was kind of a catch-all project that they're proposing, so. Any additional comments or questions? Can we entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting amended, amended certificate from the Budget Commission.
Any comments or questions on 13? Hearing none?
Motion to accept.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of contract agreement with A E P Ohio regarding Mark's Tower.
So this is the contract agreement for A E P to run, uh, essentially electric to the Mark's Tower. Commissioner Davis, do you have additional information to share on this, or, I mean, I can read the.
Yeah, we're building a new Mark's Tower.
And we need electric.
We need electric. Actually, the new service will not be above ground, it will be below ground. Had another construction update. They're moving along, just so everybody knows. We're building a, uh, it's three hundred and ten feet tall Mark's Tower. we're building a, it's 310 feet tall Marx Tower on top of Fort Hill. Be one of the tallest towers, if not the tallest tower in Scioto County. It'll open up anyone that uses Marx radios, which is multiple dozens of agencies across the state of Ohio, our local law enforcement, E M S, you, you name it. A lot of people have Marx, O D O, a lot of people do. They'll be able to bounce off that tower. This will open up some spaces, donut holes is what we call them in the county, that are now dark. It's a safety measure. We used ARPA money to help fund this. So, they are in the process of doing that. Tower's on order, maintenance building, all of that, and we'll get that tower built. And now we've got a little bit of an issue now, because one side of the highway, or one side of the hill is now cut off. So, that's going to add a little bit to their logistical challenges, but, and I don't know how fast Engineer Lebrun is going to be able to get that slip fixed, but don't know if it's going to be fast enough, because we're going to need to be mobilizing and getting the tower up there and getting things done. So, here in a month or so, if you get bored and you want to see something really cool, they're going to be moving the mast and everything else up there and building that tower, and it's, it's going to be a heck of a project. But it's, it's definitely going to help our E M S make, and, and fire everybody. They're going to have so much more visibility, uninterrupted radio in the areas that were donut holes, and that makes it safer for everybody. And it's just all part of the health and safety aspect of what we do. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you, sir.
All right. And with that, can we entertain a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve.
I will second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Hi.
In the matter of discussion regarding Scioto County E M A space.
So, city, city manager Sam Southon reached out to me yesterday. They are in the process of their renovation, build-out of the fifth, third building, something that this board was very involved in, since we bought the building for them and are selling it back to them over 10 years. Part of the program, project, as it's kind of taking shape, is building out space for E M A. Larry Mullins and his crew over in their space. I know we've all talked about this already. The question now is, hey, instead of us charging you guys lease payment or rent payment, can we subtract whatever that dollar amount is from our repayment over the next 10 years, is what the request is. So, instead of money exchanging hands twice, we just reduce the amount of their liability to us as part of their annual payment to us anyway. So, that, and, and what he's trying to figure out is if that's okay, because they are building out, they are on a schedule. So, that's why he wanted to see if I could bring it up to the board, to see if there were any objections to that. I know we don't have a leasing place with them in terms of rent, dollar amounts or anything like that, but conceptually, would this be, board be in favor of just reducing their repayment rate versus them charging us a rent payment, at least while we still have this outstanding balance between the two political subdivisions?
I have no objections.
Question?
Sure.
Sorry. Okay, so we have a term. They have a balance left on the term. I don't know how many years, if it's eight or seven.
At this point, you're right.
So, seven times 1,500, or whatever it was, I forget what. Didn't they have a rate on there or something?
It's 1,500 a month, 18,000 annual.
Oh, okay. So, what if they pay it off next year?
Yeah, I mean, I think, to your point, I think that needs to be spelled out in whatever lease agreement we do, with, or rent, whatever that agreement looks like, that M O U, rather. If, if this board would like to empower the chair to negotiate and get terms.
Great idea.
I think, I think really what he's looking for is kind of the temperature, so he can move forward with his project.
It's a commitment, yeah. Do you know what they're currently paying rent at the?
I don't, I think it's, I think, I do think it's less. This includes their internet and everything, as well as my understanding, so. All their utilities, internet service, all of that's included.
I think the financials make sense, and it is getting them closer to essential services, I guess. One thing about it, they're definitely not in a basement, not in a flood zone, is that they have been literally flooded out before in a basement of a building. So, a nondescript building in the city of Portsmouth is what we like to say. But this will put them on the upper floor. Is that right?
I think it's the third floor, yeah.
Yeah, if it ever reaches that, we're all in trouble. But, but yeah, so, the generator, I, we'll talk about that later.
Sure.
So, I would make a motion to empower Darren to negotiate.
Negotiate an M O U.
And make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Hi. Thank you both for that. And with that, we are at the end of our agenda, discussion items. We will open the floor for any questions, items on agenda. Items on agenda. All right. Any items off agenda? Nothing off agenda, nothing in the room? Anything off agenda online?
There's some off the agendas.
Actual questions?
Angela Hodge asks, she would like to know when Lower Twin Road and Nile Township will be raised above flooding. Flooding occurs frequently, and residents only exit strategies to go through Shawnee Forest Roads, which may also be closed. This has been a problem for many years.
So, that'd be a question, more so for engineer, that is a county road, correct? For engineer, I know he is looking at other roads there in the area for, for raise grants through the federal government. I don't know how that's impacted now with the different activity happening at the federal government. But there is, he's very mindful. Darren does a, a good job. He is very mindful of those roads that consistently have to have a different route. You know, the one right across from E T C comes to mind, that is Kerry's Run. I mean, it gets flooded there at the bottoms frequently, and then they have to open up the bypass road. So, don't have an answer for you, is the reality, but really, please call the engineer's office to see if they may have any plans to look at engineering of what that could be. Anytime you're talking about raising a road, it's, it comes down to a very hard financial decision. It's, it's very expensive, so.
I'll just add that I met with Engineer Lebrun, and we went down and looked at some of those roads that are impacted by heavy rains and high water. And he is going to schedule a meeting with us to discuss some opportunities to combine some grants that would cover some of those that are most needed. So, I look, I, I would say that probably within the next month, we'll be setting up a meeting with him.
Great. Any additional questions?
Scioto County Daily News, off the agenda, will the land bank be demolishing condemned homes and offering the land for sale this year?
I will look to the chair of the land bank. That's something you guys do consistently, but.
Yes. What was the second part of the question?
Listing that property for sale.
In, in this round of funding, we did not have to acquire the property. Thank goodness, because it's always a pain to do so. The property owners signed letters, giving us permission to come on-site and tear the, the properties down. So, there's no date set on those, but I believe last count was 41, 41 properties, is that right? I think it was. There was a couple of commercials in there, two commercial properties. And again, these are properties that just are terrible. I mean, condemned beyond repair, and the owners have given us easement rights to come in and take them down. They're just beyond. So, they maintain the property. When, when we leave the property, we will leave the utilities in place, capped or whatever is needed. And hopefully, and prayerfully, the development will follow. People will build new facilities, new houses. We're seeing some of that going on in former land bank properties, and the city is doing this as well. We've collaborated with the city and the township trustees. We sent out a letter asking about homes, and they're scattered everywhere. The vast majority are in the city of Portsmouth, but they are scattered a little bit everywhere in the county. So, that should be happening this year. The monies have been awarded. We have a third party doing all of the, the legwork on that, and they're getting everything put together. They're doing all the bidding, they're doing all of that. Asbestos removal, we have that to play with, not play with, I'm sorry.
Don't play with asbestos, right.
But yeah, you gotta be careful with your words. But we, we have all that to work with, and we're getting, we're getting it done. So, yeah, we got another half million to get that finished, and we're working with the city of Portsmouth on additional houses as well with their program. So, basically getting rid of the blight, turning it to bright, that's what, yeah. Anyways, yeah, that's what we're doing.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Abby Spears says, off the agenda, last week Commissioner Coleman referenced data about the unhoused community being made up of predominantly folks outside, from outside of Scioto County. What report was this information pulled from?
I, I didn't hear your question.
Abby Spears said last week you made a comment that a, a large portion of our unhoused population, our homeless population is from recovery. Is that correct? Is that, or, or from outside, sorry, from outside the area. What report did that information come from? Was the question.
Well, there's, there's, it's, it's hard to get that information in, in a document. I am basing that on conversations, and, but it's not the entire reason for homelessness, but it, there, it is a contributing factor.
I will add to that. Commissioner Coleman, in talking with law enforcement and many of our E M S people that literally communicate and talk from time to time, and, and as Commissioner Coleman said, it's not, it's not everybody. But a lot of times, the response they get was, where are you from? And they'll, they'll say, well, I came from Dayton, or I came from Columbus, or I came from Toledo, or over from Kentucky, or, and they found themselves here. Sometimes they come for recovery, sometimes they just come for drugs. I hate to say it, but it's true. And unfortunately, some people drop out of recovery, and they find themselves either squatting, homeless, in a house somewhere, or they are on the streets. Nobody likes it. Nobody likes it at all. And, but that, that's what I hear from a lot of the law enforcement personnel, and when they encounter, that's the word I'm looking for, that, that sometimes that is the answer. And it's really unfortunate, because they're here, and sometimes they have no way to get home. Sometimes they don't want to go home. They don't. They try to come, and unfortunately, they ended up on the streets. And a lot of those people still need help. They do. They're, they're broken, so.
Nothing else online? All right, fantastic. With that, I'll look to my co-commissioners for additional comments. Commissioner Davis?
For the, in the interest of time, I'll say no.
Wow. Date and time, it is? 10:17 on April 10th, 2025. Commissioner Coleman?
I have nothing.
All right. Well, I, I won't share anything either, then. We'll, we'll move it along?
April 10th.
April 10th. It's still 10:17. That's how quick that happened. Appreciate everybody for watching. I, you know, I do want to say something. This is such a unique format that this board allows to happen. I don't know of many, if any, boards that you can show up and just kind of start asking questions, be they easy questions, hard questions, whatever. Normally, most places you show up, you get to talk for five minutes, and then you get to sit down. Here, we, we'll take the arrows, we'll take the questions, and I think that goes to the transparency and the willingness for, for this board to be as open as we can be with whatever is going on in the county. So, thank you for participating. Thank you for showing up today. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Hi. Thanks so much. Have a great weekend.
Thank you all.
Thank you.